I'd like to ask everybody to rise and ask Kingsley Okuriki to offer us the invocation. And then following that, I'd like to ask Mayor Protam Steve Jones to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you bless all who are assembled here this evening and the work we seek to do for our city of Garden Grove. Help us to work in harmony as we seek to make the best decisions for our community. Purify our intentions, strengthen our purpose, and Lord, grant that in serving our community, we may serve you. Amen.
Amen. Please face the flag of our great nation and say the pledge together with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Looks like we have a couple of presentations tonight. We'll begin with the OCO Human Relations Commission.
Mayor Wenon, Honorable Counsel, this is a report from the Orange County Human Relations Commission. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, Mr. Styles, Upton Elgin, Community Members. Ken here.
Oh, forgive me. My name is Tim Cole, and this is my colleague, Christian Lopez, and we're here from Orange County Human Relations. We're here tonight to report on some of the work our nonprofit organization has done in the city of Garden Grove over the past, last year, 2015, and to present you with copies of our annual report, which the city clerk has made available to you.
Thank you.
Our organization believes that all people have the right to live free of discrimination, violence, so that, so in, toward that end, we provide programs to create safe and respectful communities. As our country reacts to terrorist violence, like the mass murders in San Bernardino, with mourning for the victims, and the anger and fear that follows, it's more important than ever to invest in the relationships among our community and to build bridges among our diverse residents. That understanding can be the foundation for maintaining a sense of community in our cities rather than descending into contentious factions. And now, to, to give you some data points on some of the, the projects that our organization does, I'm going to hand the microphone over to Christian Lopez.
Okay. OCO Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging issues with meaningful participation of all residents in the decision-making process, maintaining civility and healing as a community in the wake of difficult conflicts. Many of our programs are provided county-wide, but we would like to share the following data about some of our additional services exclusively for Garden Grove. We mediated 192 cases as well as 55 family mediations in the community or courts where one of the parties was a resident of the city of Garden Grove. In collaboration with Garden Grove Police on Hate Crimes and individuals or community groups on hate incidents, we documented three hate crimes in Garden Grove in 2014. 1,420 Garden Grove youth participated in our Bridges Violence Prevention Program, learning to create safe, inclusive school climates. Five Garden Grove youth attended in the summer leadership camp, and two participated in the year-long Human Relations Internship Program. Eighty Garden Grove students participated in our day-long Walk in My Shoes Symposium at UC Irvine, learning about respect, tolerance, and making a difference in your school and community. We sought to build a sense of community with Garden Grove residents and staff through hate crime victim support, as well as, as well as display in the OCO Civil Rights History Exhibit at Garden Grove High School in February 2015.
Thank you, Christian. To sum up, over the past 24 years, Orange County Human Relations has partnered with the cities of our county to proactively build understanding and positive relations among our residents, to bring police and diverse residents together to build safe, respectful neighborhoods, to address tragic conflicts, to overcome the divisiveness that erodes our sense of community, and to sustain the infrastructure to assist in crisis situations when they tragically occur. Just as important as our city's tangible infrastructure, the Human Relations infrastructure protects our residents and communities through effective intergroup relations programs, trained professional staff, and positive relationships. These resources can be called on at Orange County Human Relations. Now, if the mayor would come forward, we would like to honor the city of Garden Grove for its support of good relations in 2014 and 15 with a presentation of our certificate of recognition.
I'll read it for everybody. It says, "Orange County Human Relations recognizes the city of Garden Grove for its outstanding commitment to fostering mutual understanding among residents and eliminating prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination in order to make Orange County a better place for all people to live, work, and do business." Thank you so much, Christian, and we'll do it right now. Okay, sure? Yeah? Three, two, one. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and thank you for the report. You know, this is something that the city of compassion, our city of Garden Grove, definitely values, your work and your mission in terms of fostering mutual understanding among residents and eliminating prejudice and intolerance and discrimination in order to make, you know, this our home, right? So, it takes everybody to really make it happen. So, I'm so happy to see that Orange County Human Relations is leading the effort and continues to lead that effort. And I'm also very grateful that the Orange County Board of Supervisors continues to support your good work in our community. So, thank you again. All right. So, it looks like we have another, we have our community spotlight.
We do. Tonight, we have recognition of the Orange Coast Optimists and the Octagon Club, and Carl Hill is here to give the community spotlight.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize Orange Coast Optimists and the Octagon Club for providing 500 Thanksgiving baskets to the Buena Clinton Youth and Family Center and the Magnolia Park Resource Center. Would Michaela from the Octagon Club please come forward? Do you want to, here? Right there. Orange Coast Optimists was founded in 1970 by Russell Yamaga and was reinstated by Jesse James, who started the Thanksgiving basket giveaway. The Octagon Club is a youth club sponsored by Orange Coast Optimists, was first chartered in the late 1980s and started with 12 members. Today, the Octagon Club has approximately 80 members. The OCO Octagon Program is a community service program for high school students to get back to the community and learn leadership and team-building skills. The OCO and the Octagon Club have been providing Thanksgiving baskets for the Buena Clinton Youth and Family Center and Magnolia Park Family Resource Center for 10 years. The Thanksgiving basket was given to one family in 1990s. Now, 50 baskets are delivered to the low-income families in Garden Grove every year. The Garden Grove City Council would like to thank these organizations for supporting families in Garden Grove with a gift appreciation and say thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
On behalf of all the OCO Octagons and our officers, we'd like to thank the city of Garden Grove for the recognition, but the pleasure is all ours for being able to donate all of our time and effort to making the baskets.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move right along into oral communications. If you'd like to speak, please see our clerk. She has these cards that you can fill out. First up, Nicholas Dibs.
Members of the council, Mayor Wen, distinguished guests and staff of the city, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I've been a teacher since 1992, a longtime resident here in Garden Grove. And when I spoke at the last meeting about supporting re-establishing Youth and Government Day, we were missing two council members, so I just wanted to put forward the idea that we are in the beginning of the spring semester, and if it's possible to re-establish the Students in Government Day for some time later this spring on a, on a, on a student-free day, so they don't miss classes, perhaps that could occur first before implementation of the Youth Commission. So, I'll be happy to work with staff and the council to do whatever I can as a volunteer, and just wanted to see if it's possible to get it on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Keith Riley.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. The governor signed it this week. Cannabis, it's been approved. Couple weeks ago, we had lots of people in here plead their case for medicinal cannabis. I'm here from the job perspective and the revenue for the city. I was traveling down the 55 freeway the other day, and I saw several billboards along the 55 freeway regarding cannabis. It's here to stay. There is a large doctors group, I can't remember the name of it, that's going to recommend this on the ballot, so it's here to stay. I, I would like to see the council act on this in a rather expeditious manner for people's medicinal benefits, as well as the economic revenue that it will bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other cards?
Yes, we do. Tony Flores.
Thank you. Tony Flores?
Good evening, Mayor, staff. I'm Tony Flores. I'd like to talk about a couple things on your agenda. The first one is the Planning Commissioner. I see Mr. Bowie's not here tonight. I'm going to assume that this guy's going to be removed for obvious reasons, so I'd like to thank Mr. Beard for pushing this through and getting this change in our municipal code. I appreciate that. It's about time. But on the subject of crime, and that actually was a crime, it was a violation of municipal code, it's a crime, but we do have a crime problem going on in this city right now. Of note, since this particular council's been put together, the crime has risen dramatically in our city. It's gone up, which is, which is kind of sad, because, you know, Mr. Fan, you're at the DA's office, you're supposed to be a crime fighter. When you guys are sending out your campaign mailers, you know, the only thing you guys don't have is that S on your chest. I mean, you're fighting crime. I'm not really sure how many have actually fought crime, but I can tell you what a crime fighter is, and it's not what I see on campaign mailers. So, we got to get that going. And again, this, this council with your collective, I guess, power should be calling the DA's office and find out what's going on on the Barlag-Broadwater deal. You know, we're paying this guy, what, half a million bucks? How many officers could we have put on the street with that or other things with that money? Let's find out what's going on. Mr. Wen, our mayor, you have a case there right now, the DA's office, and I'm talking about crime because it permeates down from the top. According to this police report that was taken on the 30th of September 2015 regarding the Hyatt, let me just read something here real quick out of this particular police report. This section states that the mayor or his designee is authorized to voice support, participate in brainstorm sessions, outreach contracts, and execute such documents as he deems necessary. This is an excerpt from the, the alleged document that was forged, tampered with, altered. After pointing to the section above, Baun Wen notified the manager of the Hyatt that this section give him the authority to do whatever he wants. And if we're going to be acting like that, and, and I think that's amazing, I don't know if you've disputed the facts or at least the information that's in this report, I haven't heard that you've disputed it, so we have to believe that it's true. And if that's true, then there are some allegations that are pending. Again, we're talking about crime. The president of the Garden Grove Police Association is calling residents right now, leaving voicemails, talking about the crime that's going on in this city. And I'll tell you what, it's not BS. Since the last time I was here, I got phone calls, emails from folks in West Garden Grove and some from other places where there's a lot of burglaries going on, vehicle burgs, residential burgs. We don't have the manpower to do it. I got an email from another resident recently, which I forwarded to Mr. Beard, the vape store over at Notton-Lamson. Officers were there, they pulled out, you see, faces covered, taking out machines, gambling machines, apparently. Apparently, maybe some of you folks figure that gambling's just a harmless vice, a victimless crime, but, but that's not true. We got a problem here. We have to take care of this, and you guys got to step up to the plate, because the crime is out of control. And if we do have an Asian organized gang problem out here, you guys got to get on top of it. This is embarrassing. I mean, are you guys ignoring it? Are you tolerating it? Or you simply just don't know what to do about it? Because if it's the latter, then you folks need to sit down with your police chief and maybe some folks in the community, and I'd be glad to be one of them, to show what you guys need to do to get this moving, to knock this crime down. It's high. Again, since you guys have been in the council, it's gone up. I don't know where your focus is at, but you got to get it done. Okay? Now, Mr. Beard, you know, you did give me a call back, I'm going to give you some credit for that, and you responded to the email, so I appreciate that. I, I'm glad you're using some of that, that influence you have, because you will make a difference. You've got some support, whether you believe it or not. It's there. Use it. Speaking of the crime now, we're trying to stuff 10 pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag. We're trying that over at Valley View. You guys may have heard about the Olson Company proposing to do some kind of overbuilding there at, at Valley View just south of Chapman. I got my clock, too. And I think we need to, to take a look at that. I mean, to put more and more strain on the infrastructure, on our, on our police, our fire. That's crazy. I mean, are we trying to make this city look like a third world outhouse? I hope not. Let's get something going here, and gentlemen, focus on what's going on here in the city. It's, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. The crime is out of control. It's beyond it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more comments?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're going to recess into the successor.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bowie, Member Wen.
Yes.
Member Fawn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications in conjunction with other legislative bodies. Consent items, basically just approval of the warrants and receive and file in the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Oh, really? Okay.
Okay.
Can we do a roll call vote?
Sure. Member Wen.
Yes.
Member Fawn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes.
And Member Bowie is absent.
Do you have any matters from agency members? The only one I would note is that we have our single largest project ever in the city, in the history of the city, which was a redevelopment project. The Great Wolf Lodge is about to open this coming week, and I think we're all very excited about that, and we're all wishing them huge amount of success for a great launch. With that, we'll adjourn back to City Council.
Okay, we have some consent items here. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie, Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes. Thank you. We're going to move on to, there are no public hearings tonight, to 6A.
Item 6A is a letter of resignation from Sophie Tron of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Okay, we'll move to accept that letter, and I will also like to direct the clerk to issue a public notice and, and call for applicants for the Parks and Rec and Arts Commissioner vacancy.
Do you need a vote on that, Mayor?
I need a second.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie is absent, Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes. And 6B?
6B is a consideration of removing Vu Mai from the Planning Commission. This is an action item.
Okay, is there a motion?
Well, I have just a comment to make, and that is to say, this gentleman's come before us, and he's made representations of, of his credibility and his character and such, and I just want to make a point here, and that is, we're not questioning the person's credibility, his competency, or his integrity, we're just questioning the residency. And I think we should be certain as a council, we're the deciding body to say, do you live in the city or not? I think sufficient facts have come forward to our attention to make me believe that I wouldn't consider a full-time resident or a resident of the city per se. And with that, and that being a requirement of the, as a commissioner, I would suggest to the mayor that he put his name forward for removal, because he's not a resident of the city.
Is that a motion?
I'll move that. Well, the mayor has to make the motion.
Oh, oh.
It's on the agenda, and I will certainly move to remove Vu Mai from the Planning Commission.
If I may just, before we make, take the vote, Mayor, I had a really hard time on this one, just from a personal perspective, you know? Being a military guy, too, I appreciate what Colonel Mai has done for our country. But like what Councilman Beard said, it's, it comes down to legalities. And when he applied for the job, when he got appointed, he wasn't within the boundaries of legality. He was not eligible to vote in the city at that time. I think later he rectified it by registering to vote, but I think we had to look at the moment in time when he was appointed, and at that moment in time, he was not within the bounds of what is acceptable for a commissioner. That's the reason why I will come down the, on the side of, seconding your motion, Mayor, to remove Mr. Vu Mai from the Planning Commission.
Okay, great. Is there any further discussion?
Just another comment. I think anybody that offers to volunteer on a commission, we appreciate that. They're stepping forward as a volunteer, just to add credit to his willingness to want to be on the commission and such. He's a businessman within the community, but with the parameters of being required to be a resident, I don't think he meets those. And so with that, I'll be supporting this motion to ask that he be removed.
Sure. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, and I'll be supporting this as well, and I gather the other planning commissioners actually like this guy. I don't personally even know him, so I have nothing against him personally, but I do like the thought of sending a strong message that our commissioners should be not kind of, sort of, living in the city, but really actively engaged in the city. I mean, you should be 100% Garden Grove, 110% Garden Grove, live here, shop here, work here, family here, that kind of stuff. To me, it's, you should, if you're actually going to step up for an appointed or elected or whatever position, then you should really, really live here.
Absolutely agree with that. And any further discussion?
No.
Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie is absent, Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes. Okay, we'll move right along. Item 7A.
Item 7A is an award of contract to Orange County Striping Service, Inc. for IFB number S1179A for street striping, curb painting, and sign installation services. And Mr. Murray is here from Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Pomeroy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight council is being asked to award a contract to Orange County Striping Service for on-call signing and striping on various city streets. Currently, the city's streets are restriped every other year, and street signs are replaced as needed. There are minor changes or additions to the traffic striping that will also be handled with this contract. A good example of this would be the addition of red car painting for no parking. This is a status quo contract that maintains our existing practices, although the contracted amount has gone up. Staff received and opened five bids last December and determined that Orange County Striping Service was the lowest responsible bidder. The winning bid was for just over $220,000, with an additional $131,000 to perform optional sign installation work for a total of about $352,000 per year. Should council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin working by the end of March. This work was included in this year's department budget, will be paid for with gas tax. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? None? Okay. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie is absent, Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes. 7B?
7B is an award of contract to Wallison Associates Consulting, Inc. for on-call professional construction inspection services, and Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you again, Mrs. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the council is being asked to award a contract to Wallison Associates to provide on-call construction inspection services for the city's capital improvement program. This service will assist city staff in meeting obligations for a capital improvement program, which typically includes asphalt reconstruction and asphalt overlay projects. This service is to be funded out of the project costs, which are typically paid for with Mezzanine and gas tax funding. Typical tasks for construction inspection includes the oversight of the traffic control, ensuring the construction is to the proper line and grade, and ensuring material quality control standards are being met. Staff had received proposals from two qualified firms and rated the firms with respect to their experience and specific services offered. Staff negotiated a contract fee with the highest-rated firm. Wallison Associates was determined to be the most qualified firm and offered the highest services rated by city staff for not to exceed cost of $400,000 and a time period not to exceed three years. Should the funding be exhausted during this time, staff will need to return to council to authorize further expenditures. Staff is recommending that a professional service contract be awarded tonight and to authorize the city manager to execute the contract and possible extensions on behalf of the, of the city. This concludes our staff report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? None? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie is absent, Councilmember Fawn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes.
Okay.
7C?
Mayor, members of the city, I'm sorry.
That's okay. 7C is a consideration of an ordinance requiring all commissioners to be qualified electors of the city, and this is the first reading of the, of the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Section 2.21.015 of Chapter 2.21 of Title II of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to qualifications of members of committees and commissions. And Mr. Omar Sandoval is here to give the report.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the city council, the proposed ordinance would amend the municipal code to require not only that all commissioners be residents of the city, but also registered to vote in the city. There are some other minor adjustments to the municipal code based on amendments to the state law, and the recommendation is for you to introduce the ordinance that would amend the code pursuant to your direction. Earlier in your consent calendar, you agreed to read the ordinances by title only and wait for the reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sandoval, colleagues?
No.
No? Is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second?
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie is absent. Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes. Thank you. And we're here at 8A.
Item 8A is a discussion regarding the provision of financial support for nonprofit organizations, and this item was requested by Councilmember Buie, who is absent this evening.
Okay. You know, we're, let's continue to the next one, next meeting. Item 8B?
Item 8B is a discussion regarding animal care services, as requested by city manager Stiles.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Prior to that, hey, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just wanted to, full disclosure here, I work for the County of Orange, the OC Community Resources, and under that is the OC Animal Care Services. So I work directly with animal care. So on that basis, I'd like to recuse myself from any deliberations, any discussions, or any involvement with this matter. So with that, I'd like to excuse myself.
Sure, your excuse.
And I, too, am a county employee as a deputy district attorney. However, our office has, I don't believe, any involvement with this department.
Okay, please stay. All right. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we will not be asking you to vote on anything this evening. This is mainly an informational point of information that we want to share with you today. So for a number of years now, the city of Garden Grove has been getting wonderful animal care services from the OC Animal Care Services Department. We really, we get very little, if any, complaints from the public. They provide shelter services, licensing, dead animal collection, and general response to complaints of loose animals, barking dogs, and the like. As you might have read, the county is going through a process of determining to proceed with the construction of a new animal care facility down in Tustin. And as such, they, the county is coming to all the cities that participate in that contract to ask for our participation in both the construction and ongoing operation and maintenance of that facility. There are some important cost considerations that we need to be thinking about as a city and as an organization. So what I've asked, I've asked Deputy City Manager Maria Stipe to start doing some research on that, so in anticipation of questions that you might have about what does this mean to the city of Garden Grove? What is it going to cost us? What should we be budgeting for in the coming fiscal year? And so I've asked Ms. Stipe to give us a little oral overview of the research that she's done so far, and then ultimately, we will be asking you if we're on the right track and continue to do the work that we're doing, to report back to you at a later date. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Stipe.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. As Mr. Stiles mentioned, the city has contracted with the county for animal care services for a long time, since 1982, for 34 years. And we've had a very positive experience working with the county, and all of that's been very good. However, over the past five years, the cost for animal care services has almost doubled. So in fiscal year 1112, we paid about $730,000 for animal care services. And in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 1516, our projected costs are $1.3 million. There are a number of reasons for the substantial cost increases, which I can provide more information on if the council desires. But in addition to those increased costs, as Mr. Stiles also mentioned, due to the age and condition of the existing animal shelter, the county believes it's now desirable to construct a new animal shelter in which enhanced shelter and care services can be provided. The current facility is approximately 70 years old, and the county's actually been working with the Navy to secure conveyance of the land since 1999. So there's been plans to build a new shelter for some time. The new shelter is planned to be built on 10 acres of land at the former Tustin Marine Base. The county's moving very swiftly right now to move this project forward, and since they received conveyance of the land from the Navy, it's just been on a fast track. RFP was issued in December 2015 for a design-build contract with proposals due back in February, at the end of February, early March 2016, so the end of this month or beginning of next month. And the county's asking the 18 contract cities to contribute a majority of the funds towards construction of the new facility, which will have a maximum cost of $35 million. So the county's contributing the land plus $5 million towards the project, and Garden Grove's share is estimated in the range of $3.5 million to $4 million of that total. We've been advised by the county that they'll be seeking long-term agreements, commitments from cities by April 1st, 2016, so just a couple months away. And these commitments are expected to have a 10-year term, with city contributions towards the new shelter being financed over that 10-year term. So in addition to what we pay for animal care services, the one point, which is currently $1.3 million, will be required to have a supplemental cost spread out over time to pay for that new shelter, our portion of that new shelter. So due to the substantial cost increases and this large financial commitment, we've been exploring and evaluating potential alternative animal care options. To date, we've had meetings with several potential shelter service providers, as well as staff from nearby cities who have expressed an interest in potential animal care service partnerships with Garden Grove. At this time, we, as Mr. Stiles mentioned, we simply wanted to update the council on what's happening at the county, and what the timeline is, and what the expectations are from the county of the city. So we, if the council feels that it's prudent to move forward with exploration and evaluation of alternatives that can be compared to what the county program is, then we'll continue to move forward with that, on that track, and we'll plan to bring our research back to you, our findings back to you, for your consideration in the next month or so. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stiles and Ms. Stipe. I think it's very prudent for our city to explore those options. This is a big capital project where Garden Grove's portion is a lot.
Yes.
In addition to the services, the cost for the services that we're already paying for. So please do, if my colleagues would like to chime in, I personally certainly would want to see what our options are.
Yeah, I would second that. I think it's proven that we explore all of our options. $4 million is a lot of money to fork over, and I think there's probably other options, maybe through nonprofits or private entities that may be able to do it for a lesser rate.
I'll agree with that, I would.
Okay, great.
And, Mr. Mayor, and to the council member, let me just add, you know, the annual maintenance that, you know, that we pay, the $1.2, $1.3 million a year, that's in the fiscal year budget that we have each year, and that's what we plan for. When you approved the last fiscal year budget, you would have not have known or been asked to contribute $4 million for the construction of a new facility. So those are dollars that are not budgeted in the current fiscal year, or dollars that we would have contemplated spending. So it's an important, this is an important matter for our coming fiscal year budget. We'll be thinking very seriously about how we need to follow up with this. Again, we've been getting great services from Orange County Animal Care. So, you know, it's not that we're saying we're not getting good services, it's just a matter of trying to think through what our costs are, making sure we're being as efficient as we can, and, you know, with the use of precious resources that we have. So we'll continue to do our due diligence and report back to you as we get more detailed information.
Thank you. And also, please be in close communication with our representative on the board of supervisors, Supervisor Andrew Doe. I'm really curious what the responses to the RFP will be at the end of February. Thank you. Okay. And any other matters from, let's ask Mr. Beard to come back then. Great, Mr. Beard, hi. And then we can start with Mr. Fan.
Great, thanks, Mayor. I just want to just take a moment to respond to some of the comments that Mr. Flores made about crime activities in our city. Yes, admittedly, it has gone up. However, a lot of it has to do with the decisions made by the state. As you probably heard with Assembly Bill 109, the Prop 47 issues, early release from prisons, it compounds the problem. And so I don't want our residents to feel that when we compile this council, for some reason, you know, it spiked up crime. That's not the, that's not what happened. It happened to just coincide with what the state did. Being on the ground every day, from the DA's office perspective, we see people re-offending very often because of early release, because of their past crimes that was not treated. So we're working hard to try to keep the crimes down. I have to commend our police department for doing a lot more with a lot less, and I have to commend our staff and our city manager for working very hard to making sure that the numbers that we have of police officers on the force are up to par with what we need to be in order to have a very effective police force. And so rest assured, although crime is spiking a little bit, we're working very hard from the city perspective to make sure that we're all safe. On that note, I want to wish everyone a very happy Lunar New Year. That was yesterday, that was official Lunar New Year. However, the celebration continues. So this weekend, we're having a parade over in Westminster on Bolsa between Bouchard and Magnolia at 10 o'clock in the morning. Hope you can join us. And also, there'll be two festivals. One will be over at the OC Fairgrounds, and one over at the Fountain Valley Mile Square Park, going all weekend long. So please come out and join us if you can. Thank you very much.
Mr. Beard, any comments?
Just to echo what Councilmember Fan had talked about, was the police, it's not an ignored issue. I mean, we're working with the police, we're trying to work on recruitment, filling positions. It's a budget matter, and that'll be coming up as well. So, and there's outside circumstances and a lot going on in the community in, well, throughout Southern California. So we are addressing that as best we can. I do commend our own police department for doing everything they can with the resources they do have. They do a phenomenal job, and they don't get the recognition they deserve. But we are working on the manpower needs and filling those recruitments. Mr. Flores mentioned the Olson project. It's my understanding it's being put on privately by the company itself. There's a meeting at West Grove Park tomorrow, I understand.
At 6:30.
At 6:30, thank you. So I will be attending that to figure out, to find out what they are proposing or presenting. But it's not a city-sponsored or provided meeting, but come out, hear what they have to say about that development over there. And that's about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I would like to call attention to the memo that Chief Elgin had sent out in response to my request to have the process of making police complaints online. Currently, I think it's great that we do have the paper complaint form that folks can download online, but that's not necessarily the idea that I was thinking. I think the idea is that people can fill out the form online through form fields and submit it, you know, via push of a button. So if we can work with our IT director there and see what we can do, that would be great. Also, I forget the day, I'm trying to look at my notes here, but we did meet, Mr. Stiles, myself, Mr. Beard, and Mr. Sandoval, our acting city attorney, did meet with the DA's office recently, and they said that they are ready to put out a report on the Barlag-Broadwater issue. And, you know, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to invite the investigators from the DA's office to come and present to us and the public in a very transparent fashion so that we can all hear all together what the findings are and what the recommendations are. If there are no objections to that, I'd like to ask our city manager to invite them to come and offer us that report. Nope? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Also, you know, Mr. Flores, he keeps bringing up the whole Hyatt thing. That was a police incident report that is nothing criminal, nothing was sent to the DA's office, there is no case. So, Mr. Flores, thank you for keep bringing that up. You're welcome to continue, but there's nothing there. So that's that. And also, tomorrow, I'll be on the West Side at Next Level Sports Complex. Thank you for hosting me. I'll be having one-to-one meetings with anybody in the city of Garden Grove who'd like to come and meet with me one-to-one. We're going to begin at 5:30 at the Next Level Sports Complex. And if you're there to come meet with me, and you're welcome to have parking for free, you just need to let folks know that you're there to meet with the mayor, and that begins at 5:30. So if you're concerned that that overlaps with the Olson meeting, it does not. The Olson meeting starts at 6:30. So hopefully, some West Side residents will take some time out and come say hello, and let me know what your thoughts are, and what your concerns are, and what your issues are. That's just one way of meeting with me directly, but certainly, all of us are available via email and online in many different ways. So I do hear a lot from the public through online channels, but it's just an opportunity to have an in-person face-to-face. And one final thing, before I ask our city manager if he has anything, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Tibetan New Year. Today is Tibetan New Year, so losar tashi delek to all of our Tibetan friends, and, you know, our very dear friend, His Holiness, the 14th Dalai Lama, Tenzin Jatso, sends his happy losar greetings to everyone in the world. So really nice to celebrate with the Tibetan community today. And like Councilmember Fan said, Lunar New Year, or in the Vietnamese tradition, Tet, continues, and I believe it continues for about a month, but really, you know, we'll cut that down. You know, a lot of firecrackers out there, a lot of lion dancing, a lot of noise making out there, it's very festive. But this weekend, we do have the parade. I'm happy to join with my colleagues to be in that parade. That's being organized by the community in the city of Westminster, and I hope to see many of you out there. With that, Mr. Stiles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of very quick items, and I'm looking forward to my very first Tet Festival Parade, taking my daughters, and we're all going to participate in it, so we're looking forward to that.
Great.
Regarding the Olson development that was referenced earlier, we'll have a representative from our community development department to listen to the presentation as well, so we'll be up to speed on that, and we will be there for that. And then finally, related to some of the safety issues that all of you mentioned, this is really a very important item on the minds of all of us in the city administration. At the last meeting, you asked us to give you a report on the status of recruitment and other filling of positions. That went out in my city manager's memo last week. I know all of you saw that, but for folks in the general public that might not have seen that, let me reiterate just a couple things that were in that memo on what we're trying to do to make sure we stay current with that.
Thank you.
Right now, we have no current vacancies in our, among our firefighter ranks right now. I'm very happy to report that the city, we recently hired nine new firefighters. I'm very happy to report that the city, we recently hired nine new firefighters who were sworn in on February 6th. So the Fire Department's very happy to have those new firefighters. It will also really help us with management of some of our overtime issues that we spoke about a few months ago, that we were concerned about in keeping our overtime costs down. And the other good thing is, the current eligibility list for firefighters will be in place and can be used to hire new firefighters through December of 2016. So we should be in good shape there. One of the things that I've really challenged both our HR Director and our chief, Fire Chief, and our Police Chief, to make sure we are working very, very closely, to make sure we always have lists available to fill positions. It's not always easy to do, it's complicated. Every city in Southern California, especially in this part of the country, are, are fighting to hire, you know, outstanding qualified fire and police personnel. So, you know, we have to be really prepared to do those sort of things. From the Police Department, it's, it's true, crime is increasing all throughout our cities. It's not just Garden Grove that's seen increase. You've seen recent news articles in Costa Mesa and other cities where they're experiencing the exact same things. We currently have nine vacancies for police officer in our department. I'm happy to report that we have just very recently made job officer, job offers to fill, fill these vacancies as follows. We have five lateral police officers. Lateral police officers meaning they're fully certified peace officers in the state of California that are eligible to transfer from one department to another department. They don't have to go through the extensive, quite the extensive training of a police academy that a normal new police recruit might. So that's good news, and we're anticipating those five police officers to come on the force starting on March 1st. So we're working diligently to get through all the checks and everything, and we are confident that we'll have those five officers on our ranks in just a couple of weeks. We also have two police recruits who are currently in our police academy. We expect that they will graduate on April 6th and be able to join us, join the department. And we also have, on April 6th, and we also have two more recruits who are expected to graduate on, in August 16th of 2016 to also join the ranks. One of those police recruits is also bilingual in English and Vietnamese. So, you know, one of the things we want to continue to be focused on is making sure we have a department that's representative of our community and can adapt to some of the needs of the community. So in all, we are, it's, you know, it's, it's very important to us. I've challenged all of our directors, the Police Chief, HR Director, Fire Chief, to really make sure that we have these lists in place so that when we do have vacancies, we've got officers ready to immediately begin work, and we're not working from a, from a, a point of vacancies in our police department. So I wanted to pass, share that information with you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Beard?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more item that I wanted to ask to have put on the agenda as just a discussion item, and that was the Youth in Government Day that the speaker had asked about, just for a general discussion, what happened in the past. So one time, we had a youth commission, and I think we had a Youth in Government Day, so if we could just have some background information on that.
Great. Yes, thank you. Mr. Fan?
Yes, one more.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to commend and say kudos to Ms. Robin Mercario for an outstanding mural that she's put together with our, our city support. It's on the corner of Nelson and Arcacia, right outside of the Home Depot. It's next to the P, P right-of-way. We were there just right before the council meeting to unveil it. So you have a chance, please stop by. It's a beautiful painting. Actually, it's a beautiful, is it mural?
Mosaic.
Mosaic, yeah. But it's an amazing work that she's doing. We're actually have her do more stuff down the road, and I think you'd be very impressed with, with what you see.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for taking leadership on that and, and helping expand, you know, transportation alternatives in our city. You're an excellent representative on our OCTA board. Appreciate your leadership there. You know, staff never gets enough credit, I have to say, and, in our city. And I, I just want to take this moment to thank our team here in the city of Garden Grove for providing all the support for such a successful State of the City event. You know, it's, it was a success, you know, really due to the, the staff's hard work and dedication and the collaborative effort with our Chamber of Commerce. So I just want to thank everybody for helping put together such a great State of the City event. And we're going to end on a little bit of a sad note here in our city. Now, tonight, we're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Garden Grove resident Daniel Nguyen, a recent graduate of Cal State University, Long Beach. Daniel was among the best and the brightest in Garden Grove. He took pleasure in the great outdoors. In the early morning last Tuesday, he and two of his friends went hiking on one of Mount Baldy's most difficult trails, Devil's Backbone. One of his friends slipped along the path, and while reaching down to pull his friend back to safety, Daniel lost his footing and fell 1,500 feet to his death. Daniel died a hero that morning. He will be remembered by his friends and family he leaves behind, and in many lives he has touched through his heroic story. Daniel is survived by his mother and father, and we send our deepest and most heartfelt condolences to his family during this time.